Chairman, I hope you're acting careful. The first item on the agenda is a shared driveway for, on Dudley Brook Road for the Richardsons, it looks like?
Stevens.
Stevens.
Yeah, you have to seat the board.
Let me get John a voting number. All right, you want to clean this a little bit?
Well, I wrote a letter to you stating what happened there, Jeff and Gina Stevens, applying for a shared driveway.
Do you have a copy of that letter?
It wasn't attached to this thing.
No, but I sent it down to you.
Everything's got to come at once, Art, and go in one pile. Even George did that and I missed something adhesive.
I did well, didn't I?
Anyway, I think they purchased it in 2013 and this piece of property, Dudley Brook, was discontinued and rerouted around the lot, so they were really cut off. When that got, when that happened, there was a 20 by 20-foot easement created on the abutting property so they'd have access. And now that they want to build, they want to get a building permit and they need a driveway permit. So, John Palmer, who owns the property next door, the 20-foot access is on his, actually on his existing driveway. And, there you go. So, they need, they would like to have a shared approval for a shared driveway.
Where does the shared driveway go?
Well, let me see what, let me see.
It's not very far off Dudley Brook.
What do you mean, where does it go? Oh, well, it goes, well, it goes right here.
That's the shared driveway?
No, no, the shared driveway will only be in a 20, 20 by 20 foot square.
That's what this little hatch area here is?
See, that's the, that's the right-of-way, so the shared part is right there.
So, these people, because of this right-of-way, have access to Dudley Brook Road?
Yes.
What they want to do is put a house somewhere here. I assume this is either a house or a pond. And they're going to, they want to use this.
Yes.
Why is it a shared driveway? Why can't John Palmer put his driveway here? Or here?
Why make him open his driveway?
Oh, his driveway already exists? Where's that driveway?
It's, it's actually, they're, I don't know where it goes.
Kind of goes the best way around.
But it goes over that 20 feet, yes.
And they are all agreeable and basically the conversations that Art and I have had, and this will follow through for Jim as well, is that really all they need, and this is compliments of Bill Drescher, what they need is the easement language to allow the other parties to cross, which he already has, and then they need a shared driveway agreement.
And there's no problem with this location on the curve of the new road?
No.
Site distance and all that?
Yeah, it's good.
And we discovered it by accident because he thought he could just do it.
Do we need to move to accept this as complete?
With the conditions that whatever you want to put on it for the conditions.
Yeah, see, this is, we found out in the last six months or so from Bill Drescher that we didn't have to have a subdivision application or lot line adjustment application.
To do this.
To look at the shared driveway subject, which is the assumption that we had been under previously. So, unless somebody had a reason to do something with one of the lot lines, they didn't have a way to, we didn't think they had a way to come in to address shared driveways. But Bill corrected Craig on that. It had to be over six months ago.
Yeah. This is the first time it came up.
I think it was only a month ago. Maybe two months.
That was the latest.
Yeah, mine was, yeah, but anyway.
And actually it was his that got you to where you are right now.
So, this is really new territory here, I guess. But what we've done with shared driveways in the past is had to have a driveway agreement between the two property owners or whoever's using the driveway. We'll call them driveway users instead of property owners.
Yeah, the shared driveway agreement.
Right.
Easement language and a shared driveway agreement and they're done.
Where is it?
They don't have it.
And they had, both of those would have to be reviewed by.
Yeah, so I've seen copies of his easement. That just needs to be submitted, but they do have to come up with a driveway agreement and have it reviewed by town council.
Right.
Driveway agreement.
Yeah, the maintenance agreement. Who does what to who.
And what was the other thing that had to happen?
Easement.
Easement and shared driveway agreement.
I thought an easement existed.
Maintenance agreement.
I think we submitted.
He does have an easement, he just didn't bring it.
Oh, I think, it's not submitted, but what part of that?
No, we got the tax map, tax card, that's it.
That's weird. Okay, anyway, they've all seen it. You've all seen it.
We submitted it.
Craig's seen it.
Yeah, so really all you need is the shared driveway or the maintenance agreement between the two parties. Because otherwise, the easement is just a right to pass and repass. In order to use it as a driveway, you have to have an agreement between the two parties.
And before he gets a building permit, he's going to need fire ward sign off, right?
Yeah.
So, that's between you and them and the fire wards.
Yep.
So, this is not an application we have to accept and then approve? We can just make a motion?
I think so. There's no, we don't have an application for this type of activity.
Application isn't for us, though.
No, this is a driveway, this is a DPW driveway application.
So, if you wanted to, you could make it a formal application and accept it for what it's worth.
But it's, but it's not complete because he doesn't have those two documents that you mentioned.
But you could make it contingent upon the documents that.
And those documents have to be reviewed by the attorney?
Yeah. He thought he was at the ZVA.
Mr. Chairman, are you ready for motion?
I am.
I move that we accept the application of Mr. John and Jamie Palmer and Jeff and Gina Stevens for a shared driveway on Tax Map 107, Lot 3, on Dudley Brook Road. And that we approve the application subject to receipt of a copy of the easement over which the shared driveway will be and a copy of the shared driveway maintenance agreement which has been approved by town council.
One second. John, seconds. All in favor?
No discussion?
I'm sorry. Any discussion? Anybody from the public want to discuss it? Seeing there being none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions? Okay.
Thank you.
Get your docs in a row.
Oh, he's got to step down.
Oh, geez. Before you step down for, I guess.
He's representing Mr. Dow.
Did you call me and ask me that?
Next, we have the same type of application for.
Is he, is he the chairman or is he an applicant?
He's an applicant for our new.
Yep.
So, this next application is for the same situation, different side of town. What is this? Jim Dow is off Colby Road.
Colby Road.
Some of the people explaining what they need to do here.
Okay, we've got a shared driveway that we've been working on for like 12 years and it's finally coming together and I want to build a house on it, the shared driveway in the back part of it. And we plan to site to come into the driveway so it's a very safe access. And if I want to present to you, we have a nice agreement between the two of us that is signed and went to a lawyer that had it looked at and that agreement is between the two landowners.
We need to have the town attorney look at it if he hasn't done so yet.
I'm going down tomorrow.
Okay. We really need to have the town attorney look at it too and get his blessing.
That's fine, so I can leave that with you. And that way, it's all approved by my attorney and so we're both agreeable to the maintenance for putting it in the deed. So, it will be in the deed.
The deed will reference the agreement.
Right.
Now, this driveway is up to that first house, the garage, it's already, it's already built to that point, right?
Correct.
So, from that point on, it's no longer a shared driveway, it's just the driveway for that.
Correct, a single family house.
Yeah.
On 10 acres.
The original problem is the driveway to get to Lovell's is actually on Jim Dow's land and they never did a, Carl approved it, I guess not knowing that it was not on the right property. And so, there was never an easement written.
Correct.
To allow Mr. Lovell to actually use Mr. Dow's land.
It was a handshake and that's as far as we went.
So, I, I think even with this driveway agreement, and you should probably check with your professional here, you're going to have to have an easement drawn up with some type of language allowing Mr. Lovell to get in there.
An easement?
From you to Mr. Lovell.
Okay.
To allow him to use.
Both ways.
Yeah, but he needs to be allowed, right now, he's using your land, but he's using it illegally. He'll tell you.
But even though it's been.
Because Mr. Dow will be using part of Mr. Lovell's land also, so it's across.
Are there existing houses?
The first one's existing.
Which, which is the first one?
Lovell's house.
We've got this little map here.
I haven't, I haven't seen that and I apologize.
Of these two, which one is existing? I assume this is a house and this is a house.
Yeah, that map is.
That's just his house only. There's nothing beyond, we did not make the driveway any further than.
Like the other driveway in here.
Which is Dow's line?
This lot here is Dow's lot, this is Redman's lot.
And where does, where does this, this is a house?
That's the proposed house.
And this is Colby?
Right.
Yeah, Lovell comes, Lovell comes off.
Right now, here, the lot line is kind of in the middle of the driveway, kind of runs down the, just that side of the lot line, pretty much, right?
So, this is, who's law?
Lovell.
This is Lovell and his driveway, one he's using to get to his house, is on Dow's land.
Most of it is, yeah.
Yeah. And Dow wants to extend that driveway over to here and put a house here.
Correct.
What's this?
That did it.
Is this a road, is it an existing roadway?
He's proposing.
It's a logging road.
Okay.
We're hoping to put a barn back there.
So, we have the wetland permits already approved?
No, submitted.
What's, what's the dotted line?
That's the top of the slope, the Hughes Brook, Hughes, Hughes Barns, it's, it's almost vertical.
This is that big meadow on Colby Road, on the right?
Oh, yeah.
It's almost impossible to build any of it, meaning a driveway. Wait. Mr. Dow could sneak a driveway and stay on his property. It'd be silly.
That one's already there, it's already on, most of it's on the property already.
And they're agreeable butters.
We agreed and we signed a copy and the lawyer signed it and we approved of this agreement.
Oh, this does grant an easement.
And so, Lovell believed that this was originally on his land or not?
Well, that's true.
He knew it was mostly in my land right from the beginning. So, he and I have both agreed to share.
Did you know that he was building a driveway on your land way back when?
Yes, we both started this together.
Oh. What regulations do we have about shared driveways?
Backing up. Subdivision approved for around how many lots in one part of you? Six or eight, 2,000. At that time, that, Mr. Lovell wasn't the original owner.
Correct.
Love it, who it was. There's wonderful to drive with. In my understanding, Mr. Dow was that it was an agreeable situation, knowing that Mr. Dow was not here, this is his own place to live in. And he had the power and driveway to here, so obviously he was helping both of them.
Did this predate zoning?
No.
Yeah.
The only thing I saw in the zoning concerning driveways is the definition of shared driveway saying it must be approved by the.
And we just added that.
But that was there.
It was there.
That was no issue.
Let's see what the definition is.
No, it's true, I believe.
Yeah, driveway is common, it's 13. Then we can access to number one and two lots, all common driveways must be approved by the planning board. Common driveways must be approved on the frontage that we use to determine the minimum lot size for one of the lots.
That's the entire definition?
That's it. So, there's no, I mean, then we've got the driveway standards that we approved last year with the Fire Department by NFA standards and all that. I need to work that out.
Yeah, the 10% is not a problem if I tell it to turn around.
Right.
But the existing driveway wouldn't be affected by that. His grandfather would be just beyond that.
Right, because it was built before we adopted those driveway requirements.
Well, besides that, if you're fighting a fire in the first house, it wouldn't make any sense that, I mean, it wouldn't be a big deal if a fire truck drive down here.
They'll have to address that to get the building permit. I'm sure Chip's going to make him come up with a letter from the fire ward or something.
Ready for motion?
I am.
I move we accept the application as complete and approve the application of Mr. Dow for his shared driveway on Lot 412, 16810 and 412, 168.9 with Mr. Lovell, subject to receipt of an easement approved by town council and the maintenance agreement approved by town council.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Any public want to say anything? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? None, none? Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Should we put one of these in?
Yes.
Craig won't be able to sign it, we're going to have to assign that to the chairman. So, when you sign it, you have to make sure that it's an easement and Drescher's approved it and that the maintenance agreement.
I apologize to the board for being late. I let the dog inside, according to my clock, 20 to 20 after 6. I don't understand yet.
It's a bad clock.
It's an old wind-up clock, but still. I imagine you're the next item on the agenda, sir.
Say again?
I imagine you're the next item on the agenda.
I think I might be.
Yes.
I can't really say, but I'm going down.
There is a driveway, and there is a recorded.
May as well have this one. It's got all the deeds and all the everything.
Yeah, I think most of us are pretty familiar with this one.
And that many to read.
Chip, what did you do with the paper?
I gave it to him.
Those are big pieces. The only thing I was looking for is the driveway easement that has been recorded.
The deed that we got from Mr. Bovair to GWM. This is a little different story.
Mr. Merrill asked the applicant question.
Has anything changed since the last time this was rejected?
Uh, just time.
So, nothing's changed?
Nothing's changed.
So, why should we reverse our decision?
Because in light of what's happened as far as shared driveways.
I spoke with, that's one, one of the reasons I apologize for being late because I spoke to Bill Drescher about six months ago when I met with him one time. And I brought this up at the end just kind of for the sake of.
Art said it's cool.
No, it's more than that.
I think so, too.
I brought this up before Art brought it up to us.
Yeah, I thought about six months ago.
Yeah, it was, it was a long time ago. And I just mentioned that the zoning states the planning board has to approve a shared driveway. And I said, the way I look at it, the only application we have is a conditional use permit, subdivision permit, subdivision application, lot line adjustment application. Conditional use permits don't allow a shared driveway. So, that means somebody either has to bring in a lot line adjustment or subdivision application to do a shared driveway, which is what we've been saying all along. And Mr. Drescher said that since the zoning says it can be approved by the, by the planning, it has to be approved by the planning board, he thought a driveway permit submitted to the planning board for a shared driveway would suffice. Obviously, we didn't make that very public, but at the same time, everybody's heard about it, or some people have heard about it. So, Mr. Drescher decided that, yes, we could hear a shared driveway application.
On its own.
On its own, without a lot line adjustment or a subdivision. So, that's why, that's what's changed since Mr. Merrill shared before, is Mr. Drescher's opinion of that. However, I don't know, John was on the board when we walked this up. Mr. Merrill came in for a, the driveway was over 10%. That's why we went out there for the sidewalk at one time.
Actually, it all started at, as we thought it was the fourth lot, so the five one had to be working.
That's right.
Which, come find out, it was the third lot.
Right.
And I, the septic system was approved as far as design and all that and inspected before I could fill in. I reworked the driveway to reduce the grade from like 19% down to, maybe it's a 12 now.
They said we were out there as well.
And you were out there a couple of different times and the fire department is still an issue, but I'm here for the shared driveway part of it, which it is in the original owner's deed. There is an easement drawn up, the easement is in my deed as well as Dugay and now it's in Minad, who is the current owner.
So, Dugay doesn't own that parcel anymore? So, Dugay doesn't own that first parcel anymore? So, Dugay does not own that first parcel anymore?
No, he does not. Susan Minad owns that.
Okay.
And in fact, the driveway agreement that was in there originally, I didn't like it and I was cautioned, do not change it. And I was told I was crazy if I changed what the original easement was. It said that if I do damage in the process of constructing my home on my lot, that the owner, the other owner of the shared driveway has to pay half the cost of fixing it. And I said, and I said, that's not fair. I says, if I do damage to this guy's driveway, I expect to fix it. So, I changed it and it is in the easement that I, you do not have, but I think it's, it's registered, it's recorded, it's, the book and page number is right there.
Where, where?
Uh, let's look in there.
The book 6567, that must have been, so.
If you changed it, it wouldn't have to be after that?
It's a common driveway maintenance agreement dated 17, 2002 and attached to this deed. Said agreement being recorded with those were common registered deeds in book 6567.
Page something, that's easy to find out.
It's right on the back of the front page.
When did you change it?
Yeah, there's a page, page number's missing.
When did you change the, change this?
When I, when I bought, when I closed on the property.
And when was that?
2000.
8th of August, 2007?
Yeah, sounds right, 2007.
There's nothing in here that talks about sharing expenses or anything like that.
It's in the maintenance agreement. Do you have a copy of the maintenance agreement?
I don't have a copy. It's in that, it's in that.
It's not in the deed.
And like I say, I changed it so that they wouldn't be tasked with fixing something I, that I tore up.
So, this plan is no longer accurate because you changed the grade to 12%?
That is, that is. That was one of the original drawings, yeah, showing. Said agreement being recorded with those were common registered deeds in book six-five, six-seven.
Page something. That's easy to find out.
It's right on the back of the front page. When did you change this?
Yeah, there's a page, page number's missing.
Yep.
When did you change the, uh, change this?
When I, when I bought, when I closed on the property.
And when was that?
Two thousand- Eighth of August, two thousand and seven? Yeah, sounds right, two thousand and seven.
There's nothing in here that talks about sharing expenses or anything like that.
It's in the maintenance agreement. Do you have a copy of the maintenance agreement? I don't have a copy. It's in that, it's in that.
It's not in the deed.
I changed it so that they wouldn't be tasked with fixing something I, that I tore up.
So, this plan is no longer accurate because you changed the grade to twelve percent?
That is, that is- That was one of the original drawings, yeah, showing actually where it was. And it says approximately ten percent. It is not ten percent. That, that section right where it says approximately ten percent, that one little section is steep and ten percent. Yeah, right there, we're going across the lot line, it was, where it went from, we're across the lot line there. Just about, from there up to the corner-
As you say, that switchback.
Was a little steep. But from the corner all the way up to the house, lot of, of, of location of the house is all the same. Let me ask you, how, how are the, the new owners? The new owners? Yeah. Uh- They is difficult as Dugay was. They, at one time, thought of buying it off me, and I told them I would be open to that, I gave them a price, and I agreed to finance part of it. I guess need be. The reason I'm asking, if, um, if it needed to go to, if the maintenance agreement needed to go to Drescher for a review, would, would they be amicable to signing that?
Signing any revision?
It's already in their deed. So it's like they can't, you know, it's in the deed, so it's not like they have a choice. They've already agreed to it when they, when they bought the property.
They've agreed to what?
They've agreed to the easement.
To, to the easement.
That has nothing to do with the shared driveway.
And maintenance agreement is in there.
Right, but if the, if the town attorney wants changes to the maintenance agreement-
Would they be-
Would they be willing to?
Probably not, because they wanted to buy. And I don't, you know, but yet, like I said, is it, it is in their deed, that it's an easement, and it's a shared driveway. So as far as I'm concerned, when they closed on it, they agreed to everything in that deed. So to make them-
The shared driveway maintenance agreement is part of their deed? Is that what you're telling us?
Yes.
Do we have a copy of that?
Do we have a copy of their deed? Do we, do we have a copy of their deed?
I have a copy of their deed, yeah. It's under April, uh, Dugay, something Dugay. It's not Merrill, over here somewhere. William and April Dugay.
Nope.
Everything that you gave me is in that folder.
Subject to a driveway easement. This is the same deed that, that, uh, he has.
Okay, the, the, there is a paragraph in here about the driveway easement. It's the same, so I assume everybody doesn't have this. It reads the same as a deed from Bover to Mr. Merrill, except with the very last sentence where it says owner of lot fifty-one dash three has the right to. That paragraph is not on the neighbor's deed. Subject, property subject to driveway easement for, okay. Is the intention of the grantor that there be a common driveway? Wherever got the page. Pursuant to the common driveway agreement dated January seventeenth, two thousand and two, reported at Hillbrook County Road Street, six, six-five, six-seven, page three-one-four.
This is the exact same language in the deed from, um, from Bover to M, whatever it is, G, M, G, WMM.
Except-
Don't forget the page number.
Except this one line is not there. This, this, owner of lot fifty-one dash three, that, that line is not there. I don't know that, I just know that line's not there. You see what I'm saying, John?
Fifty-one-three is Merrill's lot.
John's, yes.
But this is just snow removed.
Yes.
That was from Bover. The spell onto his land.
When did the definition of shared driveway get adopted?
Uh, common driveway, well, it just says it was amended on three-twelve-thirteen.
That was to add that it had to be, right, well.
The, the reason I bring that up is it references two, two lots only, whereas this eat, this, uh, this deed specifies one, two, three, four, five lots.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not gonna happen.
That's not gonna happen. George is, that's one of the second lot, there's only one on the house there. And the other, the other lots, I mean, George is at, we won't go into it.
To give you a little more history, you see that-
Please, 'cause apparently everybody else knows about this guy.
Yeah, I'm sorry, the subdivision plan is shown under the last page.
Yep.
There was one approved where it says that fifty-foot wide driveway says approximately ten percent on it.
Yep.
There was a plan approved, if I remember right, with a road at that location.
Yeah, that looked up through all the lots that Bover was going to access from the road that he decided not to build.
These dashed lines were lot lines on that other-
Was that a proposed subdivision or an actual subdivision?
Actually-
It's an actual subdivision, and it was originally approved with a road coming off of Roosevelt Road.
Yep.
Yeah, this is-
And then Mr. Ju- uh, Mr. Bover decided that he didn't want to build the road, so he wrote himself easements to cross all these.
So then they got this subdivision approved with frontage on River Road, and he wrote this, and he added this easement thing, without planning board approval on the easement thing, obviously.
So regardless of what the deed says, it's still not gonna fly by us?
Why is that?
For, not for more than two lots, no.
Not for more than two lots.
Without a variance.
Yeah, we can't-
The fact that there's an eas-
We can't do more than two lots, it's all just a driveway zoning.
And if the owner of the other existing lot is not amenable to this?
Well, the easement, the, the fifty-foot wide easement is clearly in their deed. And the ma- there is a maintenance agreement, although we don't know what it says. That's, that they have to abide by because it's in their deed.
But there's nothing in there about a shared driveway. Or is there?
Yeah, there is.
There's nothing on the plan.
There's nothing on the plan, but there is in the deed.
Nothing on the subdivision plan about shared driveways.
What's that thing say in the deed about the shared driveway?
It's, which, which, which deed?
The neighbors? The neighbors, yes.
It has the same language as Mr. Merrill's.
So that says, that's a shared driveway.
The property is subject to a driveway easement for benefit of lots fifty-one-dash-three, fifty-one-dash-six, fifty-one-dash-seven, and fifty-one. Driveway easement shall be fifty feet, and with the per- driveway easement is to allow these lots access unto River Road or lot fifty-six-dash-fifty, four oh six-dash-fifty-one dot two. Easement is not indicated in lot line adjustment plan for wave Bover forty-nine, River Road where New Hampshire and James and Mary Sepier, Gabby, David, Do. It ends with Robert Palmer, one nineteen Corbin Road, East Alstead, New Hampshire, those are the six, two, period.
I mean, the easement's listed in the deed. It's not shown on the plan, but it's spelled out in the deed.
This, you ask your, you asked earlier, wasn't the common driveway definition was stuck in here?
Mm-hmm.
It was there before I was on the board. Mr. Hillmore was nice enough on July fourth to remind me that I've been on the board since about two thousand and five or six.
He's sitting there eating hamburgers, hot dogs, he's gotta tell you about something.
However, in two thousand and thirteen, we changed the last line. Before it said common driveways must be located on the lot line.
Mm-hmm.
And we changed it to on the frontage.
Okay.
That was-
That's the only change.
That's the only change.
Okay, so even-
And there is a court case that somebody took the town to court shortly before I joined the board, trying to put three lots on a-
Don't remember that one.
On a shared driveway, well, in Miami, we would've been doing your job then, in the town one.
Okay, so regardless of what the deed says-
And I don't know the ticker, but-
It may have been Bob Bailey.
I think it was. The name starts from there.
So the deed does not override this many regulations?
Certainly not.
No.
The question is, do we want to grant a shared driveway in this case? I, I know for the sidewalk, he certainly has a hardship trying to get across that pond slash valley slash whatever you, stream slash whatever you wanna call it.
What is the hardship?
There's gotta, it's gotta be like thirty feet, uh, fifteen, twenty feet till it's the-
Like this, and like this.
Yeah.
Nothing feels good.
And down the bottom here is wet.
Lots and, lots and, lots and, lots and, lots and, lots of fill.
And, and plus, the more fill and the deeper the fill, the more you impact the stream and pond that has to cause.
Nothing a bridge couldn't fix.
Agreed.
Yeah.
More expensive to build that than the house.
Probably.
Because what kind of house you're building?
Is, if, if each of these four or five lots is subject to the same restriction, or is subject to the easement, is this a first come, first served situation? Is that what would happen?
Pretty much.
Yep.
So, so by granting this request, we deny it to all of the others?
It does, it, yes, but at the same time, all the others would be going through his lot to get to their lot. I mean, this isn't quite right, I don't think, but easement starts here. For him to get access, he has to travel through this lot, for him to get access, he has to travel through this lot and this lot.
Eventually, what's gonna happen is the other's gonna come in for a shared driveway to share another driveway for two more lots.
Need Clarence Darrow.
Have those lots been sold or not?
No.
They weren't.
Bover still owns them.
He's, he owned these back whenever we were, a couple years ago.
As far as I know, yeah.
As far as I, he, he owned them whenever we were doing our sidewalks.
Was it four more lots up there?
So, by granting this, we're adversely affecting, in this case, Mr. Bover, the owner of those two lots. Because he can't get a shared driveway permit, he would not be able to use it.
Not, not, not if this driver-
He would not be able to use that easement.
Correct. For a driveway.
For a driveway.
He could use it for log skidding and everything else, not for an easement, not for an easement.
And without a driveway, he couldn't put a house.
Correct.
If he wanted to continue to use it, he can go to the ZB and get a variance to add more houses on the common driveway.
He could try that, yes. I don't know if there's any other way to get in there from up above.
Yeah, I know what the access is like from up top. Is that easement?
I don't even, how many lots he owns?
Did the easement go right through all the way to Roosevelt, or does it stop short? Uh, I don't know, 'cause I don't have the other deeds, I don't know what's written in the other deeds.
The easement is to access fifty-one-three, fifty-one-six, fifty-seven, and fifty-one, wherever fifty-one is.
Yeah, I don't know if that, about the Roosevelt or not.
There are a couple of other issues, number one, the steepness of the grade, which we need to consider. Number two, the opinion or the willingness of the current owner over which, who has the frontage on River Road.
Well, yes and no. I think we take the recorded maintenance agreement and these two deeds. Probably oughta have the deed that went from, I think it went from Bover to Dugay, direct, I'm not sure.
Uh-
It might've been somebody else, whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
I, I would get the deed from Bover, chain of title complete up to current owner. And make sure that restriction was there since the beginning of time. And get a copy of the recorded agreement, and give it to Mr. Drescher and say, is this okay? If he says yes, you don't have to worry about the abutter. If he says no-
What do you mean, you don't have to worry about the abutters? That, that's a policy decision we make, isn't it?
If, if the-
It's not a legal decision.
If the-
Well, it sure is.
We don't have to worry about the abutter signing an agreement.
If the abutter accepted that deed-
You mean, this abutter?
Yes. It's a previous owner to this-
Right, then we-
Signed that agreement.
Then we would have a valid maintenance agreement.
And they, and they, right.
And we would have a valid easement.
Correct.
Okay, but even if those things exist, there's still the poli- the question of the ten percent.
Oh, yeah.
And the policy question of cutting off these other lots.
He had filed a conditional use permit.
He has, he has asked nothing about ten percent, so as far as I'm concerned, it has to meet all driveway regulations. Has to meet ten percent, has to meet turnaround, has to meet everything.
But I thought we were concerned about the ten percent. Isn't that somewhere in our definition of a driveway?
He has to meet it.
That's why, he had filed a conditional use permit, that's what got him in here in the first place.
Application in front of us.
He wants to get this done first, and then-
You know what I'm saying?
And he can, he, he can deal with the grade after he gets the driveway permit approved.
We don't have that application in front of us. So if Mr. Drescher reviews all those documents and says everything's fine, we got that anyway. Then we make the policy decision about it. Good luck with everybody else. You appear to be giving an awful lot of information to Mr. Drescher all of a sudden.
He's gonna be busy.
Well, there's more than you and the other two tonight.
I spoke with Laura this morning as well, and one thing that I asked her for, he said, I'll have it for you tomorrow. So this may need to go to Laconia rather than to Bill.
You ought to send-
But Bill, Bill is familiar with this.
I was gonna say, in that case, you ought to send the other two to Laura and this one to Bill, 'cause Bill is at least somewhat familiar with this.
I can send Jim Dow to Laura. And I'll take this one down to Bill.
So if we ever go to meet Laura in Laconia, I should take my boat with me?
Yeah. I'll inspect it before you put it in the water.
We just go in the water. Okay.
Do you wanna have this reviewed?
Aye.
Bill, the town attorney?
I think-
That's what you request, and I don't know if there's any need for it.
I think for us to act on it, we have to have the town attorney, I mean, we don't see, we don't even have the documents.
See, the other ones, George, we're able to have town council review the maintenance agreement before that it was done. This one, the maintenance agreement's kinda already in place. So if we get him to review it, and he says it's okay, then make it easier for you. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you-
But there's still a possibility that you get turned down after having spent that money.
Spent what money?
It's gonna cost you money to have your attorney look at this.
Review.
Applicant pays, we taxpayers don't.
That's typical.
Yes.
You know, if he has to review it, fine, but it's, you know-
Well, yeah.
We, we make, he reviews all maintenance agreements, all driveway maintenance agreements, so- That's fine, if that's common practice.
Your two predecessors both got sent to the attorney.
I don't have a problem with anything, you know.
If you end up with a driveway, it's worth the money.
Yes.
If you end up with a driveway, it's worth the money.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I make a motion, we send this to town council, with, chain of title from when Bover owned them, to review the applicability of the maintenance agreement, and the we'll go with the maintenance agreement to see if he's okay with the wording in it.
Okay, you have a second? Oh, second.
I tried.
I can't vote?
I know.
Discussion.
We had him, you were just talking about the maintenance agreement, what about-
The easement and the maintenance agreement.
Okay, so the deed, the easement and the deeds?
Right, right.
Is he gonna, both deeds?
Yes.
Okay.
From, from when Bover owned them up?
Right.
To current owner.
Right.
Okay, what about fifty-one-two? Is that also gonna be reviewed?
Yes, that's the, that's the-
That's the main one that's gonna be reviewed.
That's the two we're talking about.
Okay, just making sure, okay.
Fifty-one, fifty-one-two and fifty-one-three. My, my, my theory, while, while we're in discussion, my theory for researching it from Bover currently, I have seen many times where all of a sudden words get changed, and it was not in the original deed.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to verify that, uh, six, seven, and, and fifty-one also reviewed, to make sure that all of them, all the language is the same amongst all of them.
Well, Mr. Bover still owns them, and there wouldn't be any deeds.
The original wouldn't be in there because it's not part of his property. He hasn't written a deed for those lots yet.
He, he still owns them, he still has a deed for the whole piece.
Okay.
But we can certainly check on the ownership of those remaining lots, and that won't be a problem. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Um, okay, we should probably continue this for some time.
Next work session?
Yeah.
I don't want, next meeting, George, you're gonna be at midnight if you wait till, if you come next meeting.
Yeah, you don't.
Depends on how long it takes them to review it, right? Right. We get a next work session, that's a month.
It'll be August twenty-third.
Next work session?
Next work session.
August ninth.
Yeah, what do you do with that?
Play anniversary. Sure.
Working anniversary?
I move to continue the application until August ninth, two thousand eighteen.
You have a second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? See that font?
I need your folder to take to the attorney. The one, I don't need the folder, I need what's in it.
This is all, this is all duplicates and other stuff.
Yeah, all the, all, all the stuff that you gave me.
Right here, it's all right here. There's nothing here that is already in there.
All right, well, I, I need a complete set of whatevers to take. And you're the one that put the whatevers together.
Okay, you need the driveway easement and the, the deeds of, of Bo Bear to Dugay.
Yeah.
And from Dugay to Menard.
Yeah, I'm afraid that you will not have it to me by the time I leave from Milford tomorrow morning.
Probably not.
So. Ten o'clock?
I wanna make a little note here.
And I'm sure Dresser is gonna do that anyway.
I was gonna say, it's gonna take Dresser probably fifteen, twenty minutes to do that.
And he will do it on his own, even if I hand him a piece of paper.
So I, I could send him to you pretty quickly myself. I'm not gonna do that. I got a busy day tomorrow.
Tomorrow, we're gonna do some deed work tomorrow.
I wouldn't worry about it.
Yeah.
I would let Dresser do it.
Dresser's gonna do it.
He's gonna check it anyway.
You're gonna be in charge of it?
Yeah, the cha- the chain of title up. It's only gonna take him fifteen minutes to do it.
Okay.
Online, it's just.
It's gonna start me running around just, yeah.
Yeah, it's online, it's easy anymore. Five years ago, it wouldn't have been so easy.
No, I got everything, I think.
Okay.
Anybody with this?
I'll take everything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eight o'clock.
I'll keep you posted as to what's going on.
Okay, yeah. Usual timeframe, like you say, by next month, right?
Yeah, hopefully. We'll keep our fingers first.
Hopefully, I'll be here a little earlier.
You didn't miss much.
No.
All right, thanks again.
Thank you.
And this is the minutia for you to deal with?
We've got some minutes. Do you wanna do those?
We got a lot of minutes, don't we?
Wait till next month.
And don't forget, you've got the, you're having a public hearing on something, so you better announce it and take comments from the public.
Yep. We're gonna bill for fifty-eight hundred dollars from Son of New Hampshire Planting Commission. We got a copy of the key permit from.
That's, that fifty-eight hundred is for the planning board or the town?
The town, plant, planting board, yes.
Town, town awares membership, right.
Yeah, she's always sent it to me and everybody else, that matter.
I've actually already sent it upstairs. That's a copy, your edification.
So, family of one pays sixty-seven cents.
This is all over?
Yes. There should be three of them. The redo for hopefully the last time on farmer.
Okay.
And I did, I spoke with Laura today about, uh, the Thurber lot line adjustment, so we should have, we should have an answer for that by next meeting.
Are we still east phasing away from Milford and going towards Laura?
Um, kind of, more for expediency.
Yeah.
And it falls. I mean, the tough stuff, you still gotta give to them. Because she's got the best track record in the state, but he's busy.
Got a lot of stuff. Maybe that's why it took me so long to get here.
Chip needs us, but it's a beast to get us expandable folders like that.
Would you like to have them? I will gladly spend some of my excess money.
Did everybody get a copy of the, everybody have a copy of the subdivision revisions that I did?
Um, yes and no, because I don't, I don't print that stuff out, so I'm.
I could use a copy too.
Thank you.
How many copies do you bring, Chris?
Three?
I think I got one.
I didn't print that many. I tried not to use too much of the company's paper. This is not working.
Oh, I was gonna bring you over that chair.
This, this does not have Bruce's road stuff we discussed.
Which I revised again right here.
Does this have everything that we've already agreed to?
I don't yet.
Yes.
And it deletes everything?
It has crossed the crossouts and bold stuff.
Okay, so this is.
With public approval?
This accurately reflects everything that we've worked on.
Ready for publication?
Yes.
Okay.
I had three revisions, this is the last one.
Did you share those revisions with us, or is this just great, doing it on its own?
No, we, the revisions were the ones we discussed prior.
Okay, 'cause I've got.
We discussed it, I changed some things, we discussed it, I changed some things.
The last one that I have is October twelfth, seventeen, and.
That's probably the revision we have in your hand.
If that's the case, then give me that one, here, please.
So we, we revised it after that, right? I just saw some red lines, that's why I assumed that. Capital T for town, capital T for the, yes. I didn't make the comma, did I?
You don't need a comma if it's capital T, but in my case, it doesn't.
I put a period, capital T.
This, this should be, this is wrong. This should be a comma and a small t.
Are you gonna open?
Pursuant to the authority vested in.
Well, let's open.
Open a public hearing?
Yeah, let's open it, first we're gonna open it to public hearing.
On?
For revision to subdivision regulations. In case anybody in the audience would like to join in. So maybe I didn't make the revisions. Or did you? Maybe I didn't print it right home. Been a while, as you know.
You had crossed the.
It's white town stuff. Do you have any, any red marks in there?
That's what I'm looking for. Okay, and you had marked all of this stuff because we were waiting for something else to put in.
Yes, this stuff is going in.
I have no idea. I mean, there, there are all sorts of. What do you have here? This is page seven.
Frontage. This is along the lot line, a button. So, okay. I missed the revision.
Well, I'm, I mean, I, I assume this is what we were doing, but I don't know, I don't have any recollection of what we agreed to. But most of these were strictly, um, grammatical changes or changes to clarify.
And it could have been notes you had to talk about when we got here.
Exactly, right, exactly.
So why don't we start with page one and go through it?
Okay.
Using your.
Well, if you guys throw deep here.
Yeah, you need to make, you make some copies of this too.
Sure, how many would you like?
Four.
Okay, um, first page, under one point one authority. It's going to be grammatically correct, the period after thirty-five dash forty-two becomes a comma and a capital T for the the, where planning board becomes a small t, so it's one sentence, pursuant to the authority, the planning board adopts the following. Moving on to the next page two, the title for two-two is not separability, it's severability.
Really? I said that ten months ago, too.
Next on page two, validity, under number one, I just have an arrow there, and the question is, do we in fact, um, sign copies of the amendments and file them with the clerk and the board of selectmen?
Yes.
We, we actually do that?
Yes.
Because I don't remember ever signing.
We never made an amendment.
Oh, never mind then.
The last amendment was signed by Mr. Moore and Mr. Bolton, Mr. Powell, Mr. Mallett. And Mike Palmasona did not sign it, but his name's.
What year?
Two thousand and six.
Okay. Okay, on page three. Everything's crossed out, but the first bolded stuff after that, pursuant to the authority.
Yep.
I, I wrote down, this is confusing. Okay, what are threshold levels?
That's the level of work required to vest the plan.
Are you gonna keep this?
I was gonna pass out copies if there's copies in there.
No, but I can make them.
Because I got, I got all the emails of that, so.
Okay.
You remember, you, you remember, th- this is what Bill Dresser came up with, actually. Six seventy-four, colon, thirty-nine, Roman numeral three and two, right? Just three.
Three.
I.
You remember the whole discussion?
I remember the whole discussion, but what's not clear to me is, is what the introductory paragraph is trying to say. Paragraphs one and two define something. And is there someplace else in this document where we use the words that are defined?
Yes.
Because this is under, the, the title for this is active and substantial development and completion. And threshold, thank you. So we set the threshold levels for what? For approving, for providing exemption from the statutory, from, from, from any future changes?
Yes.
We need to say that, and, and because I, this is probably the only place in the subdivision regulations where people can learn that they're grandfathered under certain circumstances. Here, we define what those circumstances are.
This is, I think this is almost quoted right out of the RSA.
I agree. The threshold levels to be exempt from future zoning changes? Do, do you have six, seventy-four, thirty-nine, three? Maybe that tells us.
I got the page two, yeah. Six, it says this exactly, almost exactly what this says. But it's about the five-year exemption.
Anyone else need anything for IP for us?
What'd you do with those? Piece of paper you're gonna make copies of? Or you just passed them out?
They all have them.
Okay.
You said you had them by email. I have an original in here for you if you want it.
Oh, I think we're good. Unless you, unless you want to help in the minutes.
I have a copy.
Can I make one suggestion?
Yeah.
Have somebody look at the planning board page in the website and take your name off as a member.
I saw that.
Yeah. Especially when you expired in two thousand and seventeen anyway.
Who did that?
I don't know, but your name's up there.
You'd show how much I look at that.
Bruce, maybe you know, is there someplace in this document where we talk, other than page three?
Yeah, I know what you're talking about. I was looking here, I don't see it.
I don't think it's gonna be mentioned anyplace else.
I mean, all it does is reference the RSA.
Maybe if we said this, for purposes of and pursuant to the authority set forth, et cetera, the planning board here by determines a threshold levels of the subdivision plan. Because then, what we're saying is that we're doing it for the purpose of this subdivision, which is to provide a five-year exemption.
Well, it's beyond the five years. You get five years.
You get five years unless we do something.
Unless they don't do something.
Um, no. Six seventy-four, thirty-nine, Roman numeral four. The nature of a planning board is specified by regulation or is a condition of subdivision pla- or site plan approval, what shall constitute active and substantial development or building shall entitle the subdivision plan or site plan approval by the planning board to the five-year exemption in paragraph one.
Right.
The planning board may, for good cause, extend a twenty-four month period, et cetera.
And that's what I tried to do here, because our older one didn't.
We never specified.
Right.
So in effect, what this does is to take advantage of Roman three, which allows us to define the terms that the legislature has used.
Correct.
In paragraph one A. I guess, paragraph one A and what is active and substantial?
Well, it's actually three A and three B.
Three A and B, three A and three B.
Right, where's substantial completion?
A.
No, 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 I know, but where is it in statute?
Three A.
No, three A allows us to change the definition of that, but must be in paragraph one.
So here, once substantial completion of the product improvements to show the plan
Yeah.
has occurred, so it's Roman numeral two.
Okay, so, so really, this, this has nothing to do with the subdivision regulations?
No.
So this is strictly.
Vesting.
For vesting, yeah, okay.
And we're saying we gotta, it's gotta be done, almost.
Okay, then, then forget it, leave this just the way it is.
Uh, for grammatical purposes.
Oh.
Yeah.
Uh, subsection B, C, and D on both of them.
You want capitals?
Capitals, yeah, well, not only that, to take out the space before, uh, completion on B.
On the second one? Both of them, I think.
Both of them, yeah. It just looks like it was just copied and pasted.
Oh, that's what you mean, there's a space in there.
You want capital C? You want capital C under B, capital U under C, and capital F under D?
Correct.
And the same thing down below?
Correct.
You don't need outline or anything on that, cause it's just, it's all new anyway.
Okay.
Page four. Um, two, transfer of lot, it should read, and I'm just gonna read to you what I have written here. The sale or transfer of any land in a subdivision, a plat of which has not been approved by the planning board and recorded with the county register of deeds shall be prohibited and subject to the provisions and penalties as provided in RSA seventy-six sixteen.
So you're taking that what? Instead of before.
This is transfer of lots in unapproved subdivision. The sale or transfer of any land, and then insert, in a subdivision, a plat of which has not been approved by the planning board and recorded with the county register of deeds shall be, or is prohibited and subject to the provisions and penalties as provided in RSA seventy-six sixteen.
So it says the same thing, just less, less words?
Yeah, I'm, I'm making it clearer, I think.
Yeah.
But it, it's not, it's not intended to change the intent.
No, it, it's the same intent, just not as many words.
Um, yeah, probably, maybe a few words, I don't know. We just read. This says the sale or transfer of any land before final plat, um, of, of the subdivision in question has been approved by the planning board and recorded with the county deed shall be prohibited. It, it just, I don't know, if we're going through this. Let's show that the people in the town are educated and write well. Okay?
Yeah, I just have a hard time hearing and comprehending at the same time.
The sale, the sale of, or transfer of any land in a subdivision, a plat of which has not been approved by the planning board, probably should say, no, and, and recorded with the county register of deeds, shall be prohibited. And you could substitute is for shall be. Is prohibited and subject to the provisions and penalties of RSA. You don't need to say of New Hampshire state law.
Yeah, that's.
Redundant.
There is. In the subdivision, a plat of which.
Plat of which has not been approved by the planning board.
So really you crossed that from before.
Yeah, yes.
Okay. And then take off, open the New Hampshire state law, got it?
Just put NH before RSA like it says everywhere else, just to make it.
Did we say that?
Everything else, yeah.
We don't say it in the previous page.
I should. Where else, so far I've seen, it says NH space.
No, it's on, on, at two point three, the amendments, it's just RSA's.
Yeah, under accurate permissions, number.
But John has a point.
Uh, two point nine says NH RSA.
We're inconsistent and let's, whatever, whatever you decide Craig, just do it throughout the document.
RSA with NH space.
Space RSA.
Hopefully find it.
On three B, cross out the word new. I think it creates confusion. No building permit shall be granted in any, I wouldn't put in any, but in any subdivision until the plat has received final approval from the planning board, it's not just a new subdivision.
Hopefully also isn't approved, yes.
Exactly. So strike new, um. Question on the last sentence, once a developer has provided a proper form of security to guarantee installation of any required public improvements, building permits shall not be denied. What does that mean?
Sounds like a loophole.
I, I would delete that entire sentence.
No, you can't, it's in the RSA. Somewhere. You'd have to do the improvements or bond it.
But it says building permits will not be denied, building permits are not upright.
Once, once all the, once all the guarantee, once the guarantees are in place for all the improvements that need to be done, that's allowed for. What the RSA's call for. And there's particular reasons why it's.
To be honest, I don't like the wording, but something similar should be said. I mean, once you, once you bonded.
You can get, you can't get denied building permits.
There is a limit, what about, what about driveways? Don't we, don't, and we, don't we require a driveway permit before you get a building permit? In these subdivisions?
Yeah, it's part of the building permit application.
So what happens if, um?
I mean, if the guy said.
They still, they still need to get a septic approval and all that stuff too, it's not just to put up the bond and they, they get, they.
I mean, the building has to be, the, the building plans have to be structurally sound and that kind of.
Right, 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 they still need all the other requirements to get a building permit.
Let's assume that you get a building permit, you put up a house, the house passes inspection, but there's no driveway. You can't get a driveway permit.
You won't get a CO with no driveway.
So that's the ultimate, the CO?
Yes.
Which is the next, number four.
And there's all, right, because number four says the road has to be done to base coat pavement before they can get a CO.
Doesn't say anything about driveways.
No, but that's part of the building permit.
Yeah, that's building code.
Building code, that's, that's.
We don't say anything about electrical and the water.
Septic system or well or anything like that either, it's, it's all part of the same, it's all part of the building permit.
Okay.
What, what that sentence is meaning is that. You can't force a developer to completely build a road and have it all approve, all accepted by the town before you get, before you give them a building permit. There has to be some intermediate step where they can get a building permit, that's why if all of financial guarantees are in place.
Six seventy-six, twelve, Roman numeral five. No building permit shall be denied on grounds of uncompleted streets or utilities when construction of such streets or utilities has been secured to the municipality by bond or security approved by the planning board pursuant to six seventy-four thirty-six.
Okay, moving on, page five to ten. Should we delete the first sentence?
I don't think we can.
Well, and, what does it mean, the applicant is advised?
Well, that's a good point.
Why don't we, okay, let's try something else then, strike the words advise that he will be. So the applicant is responsible for the apportioned cost of off-site improvements. And you could add, although I, for some reason it's crossed out, um, the applicant is responsible for the apportioned cost of off-site improvements um, required by the planning board as a condition of plat approval. I don't know if that adds anything or is just redundant.
Where are you?
I was adding some words here. The applicant, strike is, strike the words advise that he will be. So the applicant is responsible for the apportioned cost of off-site improvements required by the planning board as a condition of plat approval. Isn't that what we're saying here?
Yes, it is. Yeah, I don't like the way it says it is advised, that's.
Same paragraph or same section? Uh, about halfway down, road impact studies will include but are not limited to that comma should be changed with colon and then broken out into points determined by the existing and proposed traffic levels. Next point, I think, of the nature and cost required, blah blah blah, I think.
Is it semicolons for the cause?
Maybe.
Well, no. Technically, no, because the word determination applies to of the existing and proposed traffic levels. It applies to of the nature and cost of improvements required to bring, et cetera. And applies to of the pro rata shares of expenses for all interested parties. In other words, road impact studies will include but are not in, not limited to determination of three things. The existing and proposed traffic levels, the nature and cost of improvements required, et cetera, and the pro rata share of expense. That's what a, that's what a road study has to include.
Okay.
So from a grammatical point of view, this is fine, although it certainly could be clarified along the lines you're suggesting, John.
Well, i- if it's grammatically correct, that's fine.
Okay. So let's strike out advise that he will be.
Yep, we got that.
And then add after improvements required by the planning board as a condition of plat approval.
I don't think you need the word plat.
Okay.
As required by the planning board as a condition of approval.
Is there a comma after improvements then?
No. Okay.
No.
Okay.
Uh, third line down, his should be replaced by either its or a. The sent, the, the subject of the sentence is a subdivider. And it says a subdivider may be required to provide a road impact study and pay for his fair share.
Where would it be there?
Well, a sub, a subdivider in the United States is singular, whether it's a corporation or a person. So it could be its, technically it's its, his, or her.
Its.
It's.
Change his to its.
Yeah. Or if you really wanna budget, change his to a. Okay, page six. Now, and this, this will please, uh, are grammarian. Okay, middle of the paragraph.
Are you making up words now?
Grammarian, no, that's a different word. For purposes of receipt of notification by a municipality of a local land use board hearing.
Where are we at?
Middle of, uh, three, two.
Okay.
For purposes of receipt of a notification by a municipality of a local land use board hearing, then it says comma. I would add after that in parenthesis, a, small a, so paren, small a, closed paren. In the case of an abutting property owner being under condominium, et cetera, the term of butter means as defined in. And then after Roman three, XX, comma, three.
Yep.
Put a semi-colon and then add. And B, the B is in parentheses. The applicant and any holders of the conservation, preservation, or agriculture preservation restrictions on property of budding the land under consideration. So what we're, what we're trying to do here is, I'm trying to make a parallelism between A and B without changing it.
Yeah, that's on six seventy-six four. I'm just wondering, this is word for word from something.
Yeah, you're probably right.
I think that's an incomplete, uh.
Yeah.
Reference. Six seventy, six seventy-six four B, I think there's something missing in front of the B, cause there's Roman numeral one, there's Roman numeral two, et cetera.
Maybe are they referring to the entire section, one and two and three, et cetera?
This is rather lengthy RSA, I'm not sure. They should probably read one B. Roman numeral one.
Says.
Uh. In B.
B, six seventy-six, colon, four. Prints a small b. Prints a small d, one.
This RSA doesn't follow the normal.
No, it doesn't.
Pattern of other RSA.
I think it's, I think it's someplace else.
Well, there's another reference, three fifty-six, B three.
That's condominium act, oh. Sorry, I, I have that one.
You know that all.
Yeah, boom, three fifty-six is all condominium.
I think it's supposed to be, uh, Roman numeral one, B. Is what it's, what it's referencing.
You mean the part that says the planning board shall specify by regulation what constitutes complete application?
Yep, towards, I think.
Whereabouts are you in that big, long?
Uh, where was I, where did I see it? Um. The applicant shall file the application with the board or its agent at least twenty-one days prior to the meeting, which the application will be accepted, the application shall include the names of.
Okay, I got you.
I think that's where it's referencing? Could also be, I saw somewhere else. D one, notice of the applicant holder's conservation.
That's where I was.
Yeah.
Four seventy-seven, not in here, of course.
What is it we're looking for?
I was looking for four seventy-seven, whatever it is.
Forty-five?
Yeah, we don't have that. We have four thirty-two, thirty-four, to four seventy-seven. Although, we just, we just made a good point, cause we also have to include the address of any professional stamping the claim.
Four seventy-seven, forty-five is conveyances and mortgages and realty, conservation and preservation restrictions definition. And why is it referencing that? Oh, cause it's defining agr- agricultural preservation restriction.
All right.
That's right.
Yeah, the RSC four seventy-seven, forty-five?
Yeah. If you look at, uh, Roman numeral three, that's where it's defined as the agricultural preservation restriction.
Why, it sure like the way we have it designed as zoning. We got the right reference.
Yeah, we get the right reference, but we're only using a little tiny bit of it. Yeah, we get the right reference, but we're only using a little tiny bit of it.
Okay, why don't we do the, why don't we, uh, copy the definition from zoning as defined in RSA six seventy-two, colon, three. A butter means any person whose property is located in New Hampshire and joins or is directly across the street or stream from the land under consideration by the local land use board for purposes of receiving testimony only. And off the purpose of notification, the term of butter shall include any person who is able to demonstrate that his land will be directly affected by a proposal, yada, dada, do. And then it goes on to say about the, in the case of abutting property being a condominium, we go to three fifty-six, B, three. For purposes of notification of a municipality of useful local use, in that case, it goes with the housing, municipal housing park. The term butter includes the manufactured housing park owner and the tenants who own the manufactured housing which joins as directly across the street. I would say CR, say six seventy-two, three.
Just like zoning does.
Yes.
That'd be the easiest way to do it. They're consistent that way.
Is you paying attention?
I am, I'm not, I'm not sure what you want to do.
I just wanted to say the butter is.
Cross the whole thing out?
Cross the whole thing out.
The whole thing?
The whole thing. And write down as defined in RSA six seventy-two, colon, three. Leave the word of butter, take everything else out.
In NH, RSA, six seventy-three, what?
Six seventy-two, colon.
Six seventy-two, colon, three.
And that defines a butter?
Yep.
In whole, yep.
Whole thing.
Including, it mentions the conservation, preservation, agricultural easements?
No.
See, that's here, that must be in seventy-six, four. I should have brought my.
I should have brought.
Where's your question?
No, you didn't bring it either.
So why not just reference six seventy-two, colon, three? And six seventy-four, or correction, six seventy-six, colon, four, one, B? Like every reference to RSA.
One of the, one of the things that we tried to do at one point was to reduce the number of references to RSAs. And put the RSA language in here to make it easier for people to use.
Okay, so keep, keep.
So right now, right now, what we've done, if we just said as defined in, in order for me to read the where zone, the where subdivision regulations, I've got a copy of the RSAs.
Which isn't part of it yet, but, yeah.
I understand, yeah. I mean, we, you can copy word for word, but it, the, the six seventy-two, three is a rather lengthy, well, not as lengthy as the other ones, but it is a rather lengthy, uh, definition. And we could, we could just do it word for word and then add, and then keep the last sentence. RSA six seventy, six seventy-six, colon, four, one, B, further includes as in a butter, the applicant and any holder, blah, blah, blah.
But.
Because we've got the first half and then that last sentence, we're adding an additional.
But remember that this whole sentence, the way it's written, applies only to a butters for purposes of receipt of notification. Testimony, a butters for purpose of receiving testimony is defined differently and above. For purposes of receiving, okay. It's a general definition on the first three lines. Then the next three or four lines are a definition for receiving testimony only. And then the last half of the definition is for purposes of receipt of notification.
So you're saying this makes it clearer for the general public?
I, whatever, if, whenever we wanted to find something or use a term, it's, it's helpful if we do it here, even if we're taking the language directly out of the RSA.
Well, either leave it just like it is because there's nothing wrong with the way it is.
Six seven, six seventy-six, colon, four, one, B, John, is that, is, does that define a butter for purposes of notification? Or for purposes of testimony, or for purposes of giving them a right to appeal?
Give me one moment, I'll pull it up and look at that. One, B, the planning board shall specify by regulation what constitute a completed application sufficient to invoke jurisdiction to obtain approval. A completed application means that sufficient information is included or submitted to allow the board to proceed with consideration and to make an.
That's six seventy-six, colon, four?
Oh, yeah.
Six seventy-six, colon, four, one, B.
Is there a six seventy-six, colon, four, B?
There is not a.
Not without Roman number one in front of it or two.
Correct, there has to be a Roman numeral in front of it.
Well, that citation makes absolutely no sense.
It's only a small part of B.
It's a very small, very small section, about three quarters of the way down of B that mentions, uh, the applicant. The application shall include the names and addresses of all, of all the applicants, all holders of conservation, preservation, or agricultural preservation restrictions. As defined in RSA four seventy-seven, colon, forty-five, and all of butters as indicated in the town record for incorporated.
What we should add on to this is that as defined in RSA four seventy-seven, colon, forty-five.
What?
Well, that tells you what, that, that, that's the definition of a agricultural preservation reservation.
How about we take the RSA? It's the right, if we put a Roman number one in there, RSA six seventy-four, colon, four, Roman number one, B. And add, instead of, we're gonna start to take out the whole two lines, right out of, right out of the book. The application shall include, the application shall include the names and addresses of the applicant, all holders of conservation, preservation, or agricultural preservation restrictions. As defined in the, 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 all butters as indicated in town records for incorporated towns or county records for unincorporated towns. Organized place number one, five, eight, four, data filing, a butter shall also be identified on any plat submitted to the board. Application shall also include the name and business address of every engineer, architect, landscaper, soil scientist, his professional seal appears on any plat submitted to the board, period.
That's the part that's relevant.
So you're just copying the last half of one, B, basically?
Yes. After the sentence with twenty-one days prior.
Yeah.
And that gives the five day thing in there too, which I don't think is in there anywhere else either, anyway. Because.
So after RSA three fifty-six, dash, B, three, comma, XX, comma, three, then add that word.
Right.
With the Roman number one in there, obviously.
What's this supposed to do, accomplish?
It gets the RSA reference for the butter, for the applicant and holders of conservation, preservation, agricultural restrictions in there, and also the professional who stamped the plan. Which we don't have in here at all.
And it lets them know that the butters list needs to be on five days old.
Yeah, can't do it two years ago.
Believe it or not, does happen now. People don't update the list, someone do the transfer.
Oh, well, I do in the butters list as I start a job.
Right.
I'm putting the butters on plan. You gotta remember to check it before you submit.
Right.
When you start the deed research, field boundary survey, the first thing you do is do a butters list. That's gonna make a really, really, really long paragraph.
I don't see another way to shorten it down. Not if we're gonna include six seventy-six, four, one, B.
Sounds like we have to.
Okay, what was next?
If we're gonna follow the theme of making this gender neutral, uh, number two, the owner of record or his agent, or its agent?
Its agent.
Would that be correct, Neil?
Yep.
Okay.
Let's back up a minute, make sure I'm getting the typing right.
Back to a letter?
Yes. I'm gonna, after the Roman number three, I'm gonna put a period.
There's already a period there.
Yeah, okay, I'm gonna leave the period there.
Right. Then go to six seventy-six, colon, four, Roman number one, B.
Okay. Then type, then type all that in there, okay?
You don't have to type, you can cut and paste, you know?
I'm gonna go cut and paste out of the RSA.
Yeah, you can. You want a website?
I will not be able to do that.
Oh.
I didn't say you couldn't do it, I said I will not be able to do that.
Um, under six. Any and all starships built for the, built for the support, shelter, enclosure of persons, animals, what is it, cattle?
It's a thing that you own.
Car.
Yeah.
Tractor.
Personal property.
Or some buggy.
Okay.
He was writing an awful lot of notes for some reason.
No, I'm just.
Oh, minutes.
Okay.
On building setbacks. Seven.
So what, just before you go on, what did we decide there? For three point two. A butter.
I'm typing in a portion of the RSA for the last sentence.
So. Where it starts RSA six seventy-six, four?
Yes.
Where it starts RSA six seventy-four, Roman number one, B, then I'm gonna start, I'll probably use further includes, and then start right there.
Well, this is, this talks about the application, this has nothing to do with notification.
Yes, it does. The application shall probably, well, somewhere it says notification in this whole paragraph.
Here.
I think this is totally, totally wrong. Here, D, one.
Yeah, we heard that too. This, this is, okay, whichever, I don't care, as long as it includes the soil scientist.
Notice to the applicant, holders of conservation, preservation, or agricultural preservation restrictions, a butters in the public shall be given as follows. Which suggests to me that there's a difference between an a butter and an applicant, we know that, and the holders of these things, and we better make sure that we do that.
That's in here. Orders of easements. Well, I will get something in there, how's that, for us to talk about next time?
Okay.
I don't know which one to use yet.
Yeah, D, one looks like if, if it's possible.
D, D, one has less words than D, one does.
The key, the key thing here is that there are three groups of people.
Yes.
Four groups of people who have to receive notice. A butters.
Yep.
Those people living directly across the street. The applicant.
Yep.
The.
Easement holders.
No, hold on, the easement holders.
The butters, okay.
And a condominium association officer.
And what we don't have in here is and manufactured housing park, and the professional who steals stamps the plan. All have been notified.
Which D, one does.
Right. Which D, one goes on to say. Every engineer, there's also, there's also a housing park, manufactured housing park.
D, one doesn't have the five day update either, so.
Well, we define it in a definition, it shouldn't be there, that should be in the application. Now that I think about it. Well, if you go to page fifty-five of the regulations, I just have it in there. On the fee schedule, probably new application, so I didn't double check that yet. Three asterisks.
Yeah, you could lift that.
You still gotta put the Roman number one.
But you have to add for purposes of notification.
Right, yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna put down, Craig's gonna revise.
Yeah. I'm gonna make sure it includes condo and manufactured housing park as well, but. Yeah. I got enough place that I can grab that.
Moving on.
Yes. Its, under applicant.
Seven.
Seven.
Building setback, you got near a street line or property line, now we also need to add in wetland setback.
This is a building setback.
Yeah, no, but they, it's got, there's a twenty-five foot building setback from wetlands, right?
Twenty-five foot buffer, fifty foot building setback from wetlands after a certain date. The wetland setback became effective the date of the ordinance.
Right.
The buffer is there for everybody.
Right. I mean, that setback is essentially a building involved, right, so that includes the wetland setback.
Near a street line, comma, property line, cross out or, sorry, street line, comma, cross out or. Near a street line, comma, property line, cross out or, sorry, street line, comma, cross out or, property line, or, wetland. Period.
Wetland boundary or wetland?
Wetland. We have wetlands defined all over the place in here. In art, or whatever it is. In the zoning. Yeah, we got a wetland definition in the zoning. Wow, this is taking longer than I thought it would. Looks okay.
So are we changing, making any change in building setback?
Yes, putting a comma after street line. Getting rid of the word or. And adding it, so it reads street line, comma, property line, or, wetland, period.
Under number eight, complete, what does it mean shall be documented, complete, and all improvements, et cetera?
I was thinking it should be deemed instead of documented or something.
Yeah, so deemed or considered complete.
Right.
So let's. Let's put down considered complete. Strike document, documented, and substitute considered. And are we still okay with these dates? Global warming hasn't caused us to change them?
Well, we had changed the date. We had talked about that.
I think we should cross it, I think we should take those. Take those out and leave with the road regulations.
So eliminate the two sentences that have dates in them?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
That is in the next section.
And forty degrees and rising, is okay?
Yes. I assume that's in the road regs?
Yeah.
Okay.
See here, does anybody know where appendix four is?
Yep, I just checked it.
There is an appendix four?
Yes. Normal consideration checklist.
What page?
Fifty-two.
Six-two?
Fifty-two, sorry. That's what's stuck in my throat. Got it.
Okay.
Um. Number thirteen? Do we need the, the, the verbiage as recently defined relative to all that stuff?
Where are you?
Number thirteen.
Cause reading that, the final subdivision plat. Is recently defined in four seventy-eight one A, which says newly created parcels, streets, alleys, and easements in a subdivision, or, and then go on to B.
Yeah, we should be able to just list RSA four seventy-eight one, right? Instead of the rest of it. Cause that Senate Bill one seventy-six was only for. Two thousand four, I'm assuming.
Yeah, cause.
Start all over again, the following.
Four seventy-eight one A, one A one, Roman numeral one, excuse me, four seventy-eight colon one dash lowercase a, Roman numeral one. Says a plat, well, it says a lot, but, a plat for the purpose of this section shall be a map of a specific land area whose boundaries are defined by. Mets and bounds?
Meets and bounds.
Meets and bounds. The plat may show A, B, and so on. So four seventy-eight colon one dash. A. Roman numeral one. Think would probably be.
Four seventy-eight, colon.
Colon one, dash lowercase a, Roman, then Roman numeral one.
No colon or anything after A?
Correct.
Okay. So take out the recently defined, da-da-da-da-da. Senate Bill one seventy-six, take out approved. Back to January first, two thousand five. Do I put a comma after plat and a comma after RSA four seventy-eight, yabba-dabba-do? Mr. Grammar, please.
Are you talking to him or to me?
Yes.
I defer to Neil on this one.
What does it mean pursuant to this, as defined in?
Yes.
Does seventy-eight one A define it in fact?
Yes.
So what we're really saying is, as defined in, okay. And not pursuant to, it should be as defined in. Okay.
Commas or anything?
No.
Okay, no comma there.
No, correct, no, you're correct, no comma. Okay, um, developer, eleven. The subdivider and developer are different. Okay? But does a developer have to. Sell the lots as well as construct them, because that's what this says. Responsible for the construction of all improvements and subsequent sale of lots. And the question is, well, what happens if I just do the constructing, my name's Philmore.
Yeah, you're hired out.
Right, and somebody else.
Then you're not the developer. If you just hire to do the constructing, you're not the developer.
Well, I, I'm selling, I own the lots, I hire you to do the building, I hire John to do the selling, he's a real estate agent.
You're, you're, you're the developer, you're in charge of this too.
So like, so like the GC of the project?
I own the lots, I sell them to Bruce.
The developer is going and owns the land.
I, I have the lots, I sell them to Bruce. Bruce is a builder, so he builds.
Houses.
He builds houses, and he, um. Arranges with John to sell them, is he the developer?
No, you were.
You were.
No, no, I sold the land to Bruce.
You were. Now he is, you sold it.
If you sold it as, did you sell it?
You sold it without a road.
Whoever, if, if you sold it as a, as a approved parcel with nothing, no improvements on it yet. Then you're not the developer, you're the subdivider, because you did the subdivision, but you didn't build anything.
Okay, so I'm the subdivider, I sell it to you. You build it.
Then if I, if I buy it as, like, one piece from you, and then I build infrastructure and stuff, then yeah, I'd be the developer.
But in this, it says that to be the developer, you also have to sell the lots.
Well, it doesn't mean real estate, that means they transfer from you to an end buyer, another buyer.
So there's no situation in which a person could avoid being a developer if the only thing he did was to construct, but did not sell.
He's gotta, he's gotta dispose of the, the parcel somehow, so he's gotta sell them at some point, otherwise.
Okay, and you're saying if, if this, if, if a person owns the land, hires a contractor to build the houses, and hires a real estate agent to sell the houses, that person is the developer?
Right.
Okay, so the and is correct here in eleven. The developer is responsible for the construction and sale. You have to do both.
Mm-hmm.
And this is not creating a loophole for someone who would say, I am not the developer, I didn't sell them, all I did was have them built.
If you own the land, you have to, you have to, when you transfer it to somebody, that's a sale.
Okay. Um. Moving on to fifteen. It should read the distance, I agreed that crossing out the first, this is the definition of frontage. Frontage, the distance along the lot line, strike from either. And say a butting, a public highway. Except in limited access highways as defined. Like, six highways. Now, I don't understand the last part of that sentence, order roads shown on approved. Recorded and bonded subdivision plat. Is that frontage?
Yes.
So the distance along the lot line. A butting A, a butting a public highway. Or. A road shown on approved subdivision plat.
Yes.
If you abut either a public highway or a road on an approved plat, that's frontage.
Approved, recorded, and bonded, yes.
Yes, right, and there's no other, no other definition of frontage. Okay. Got it. So, I think you need to eliminate the subdivision on the, semicolon on line four after highways.
Put a comma there instead?
No.
No, there's an or, not something just, right?
Oh, okay.
Yeah. If you really wanted to make it clear, you could say. Okay, so instead of from either, it's a butting.
And no colon.
And no colon.
Wonder who I copied that from?
Um. Number sixteen, lot.
Uh, can we?
Yep.
Go back to frontage? Very last, very last, see appendix, which appendix, or diagrams?
Oh, that's on the cul-de-sac, the camera heads, right?
We have to identify which appendix for them to reference.
Yep.
Yeah.
Were proposed lot fronts in part on, on a turnaround?
Yeah.
Only the width of the turnaround, double calculated, is frontage?
There's a little sketchy somewhere for that.
Yeah, Troy don't have it in here because I can't.
Yeah, I remember seeing that sketch.
This, oh, that sketch.
But, thank you, John, good catch.
He doesn't have an appendix number. There's a sketch.
No appendix number?
No.
There's the sketch right there.
So we need to identify that appendix, and then identify the, the theme there, right?
Mm-hmm, well.
Last appendix is appendix.
Actually, actually, if you go to this.
It's also identified on appendix nine. On the back of it.
I was gonna call that appendix ten.
Okay.
Um, is it part of nine?
Well, I, I think the nines, nines are a real.
Okay, so let's call that appendix ten and.
Shit, I didn't wanna write on that. I got wiped out.
We've enough page, eight, I have nothing.
Uh, I think you wanted to do something on sixteen to be, uh, before I interrupted.
Yeah, if you were.
Oh, yeah. Um, anything about sewage and water?
No, let's cover the zoning ones.
Okay. I have nothing on eight, nine, on ten. Number six in the middle of the page. This deals with sprinklers. And.
Yeah, I don't think that's right anymore.
Exactly, the, the authority to do this was removed by the legislature. I think you have to eliminate six.
Okay, I'll make sure. Okay, that's all your firefighting, water supply, fire suppression systems talking about. Where a system has to be, how big it has to be. The three lot thing. Yeah, I think we did too.
So delete six. Um, under G. It says the board requires written comments, I think that should say the board may request.
Yeah. Or even shall request. Or.
No, because if it says shall, it says all plans regardless of size and type, we don't wanna bother them that much.
No, no, because it may require, may request.
May request, or may require.
How about requests? I tried to eliminate a word, may request is okay.
Yep.
I think we need to add police department on there too, for, after written.
Yeah.
And let's say we get some huge proposal, we wanna add a school board or something, or?
Well, nothing request, nothing precludes us from asking anybody.
None, we're just telling them, throw it in there.
It certainly wouldn't hurt.
I mean, those, those are typically the places where. You see impact fees applied to, so those are the ones that would have.
What's the proper terminology, school district? Ooh, all three?
SAU.
No, SAU covers more than where, was, if it was just an SAU for where, it'd be one thing, but it's not.
But if it's like, um, workforce housing.
Well, if I said the local school boards.
Yeah, we got two school boards, right, we got the John Stack and.
Put down local school boards.
Yeah.
Local capitalized school.
No.
Thank you. Obviously, they don't capitalize boards either.
Right.
So I'm gonna stick a comma after conservation commission, police department, comma, local school boards, and other work director.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Moving on to page. Uh, eleven, the design review phase. Line two, a design review is distinct and separate, every applicant for a major subdivision shall appear?
Unless we have a board.
Okay. It's not should appear, shall.
Shall, yeah.
It's show, okay. Um. Ooh, look at this. So many pages with nothing on them.
That's when you fell, that's when you fell asleep.
I'm, I'm thinking to myself, maybe I never read this. Oh, no, this is roadway design stuff.
That's when you fell asleep.
So, hang on, where's, where's your stuff, Bruce?
You got, he gave me a copy, didn't he?
Here.
Yeah, there, okay. So I'm not changing anything in eight point oh? Or eight point one? I'm gonna copy and paste Bruce's stuff into eight point two?
Like I said, you're the Word file.
Yep.
That's not true. I thought Bruce changed eight point one. I'll take Bruce's eight point two and change things in eight point one and eight point oh and.
If it's necessary, yeah.
I'm gonna change the color a little to two feet, by the way, instead of five feet.
Okay.
And then I'm gonna copy and paste Bruce's eight point two into eight point two.
I'll send you the Word file. I'll send you the Word file.
And that goes through to.
Page twenty-three where it's. Let's go to three, there it is.
That's where it goes right up to page twenty-five.
Oh, you, you did three also?
Yeah, cuz we.
Okay.
We, we looked at it last time, though, some things they had needed to be updated. That's where the dates are and stuff, is number ten.
No, I, I think I. Gave up on reading, because for example, on page thirty, there's a huge set of question marks that Craig has put in. And I never got to them.
Well, there's new handles.
Right.
Yes. Personally, I'm not even gonna look at the, uh. Eight point eight. Or anything about eight point thirteen. Except to make sure the sprinklers is included somewhere. Has everybody noticed that I put in, uh.
Page?
Bottom of thirty-six, any plot, plan, subdivision plan or town road construction plans must include underground utility services, period. I took out aerial services and utility poles and that kinda stuff.
What number is?
Eight point ten. It continues on to the next page. I knew I did it somewhere, I didn't know where I put it anymore.
Page dot thirteen. Does the word owner need to be in bold and capitalized, town need to be capitalized, and town need to be capitalized? First paragraph.
I agree.
All of those should be in ordinary type, not bolded, not capitalized, just ordinary type.
I'm gonna get nervous that somebody wouldn't realize who the owner was. Someone could be. You gotta realize, yeah, this whole sister thing when it came about twenty years ago.
Well, boy, it was a huge deal.
It was. There was a lot of kicking and screaming and. Bissing and moaning going on about it.
And today?
Today, everybody's pretty much resigned themselves to the fact that.
A lot of sighing and, oh crap, I gotta spend.
Yeah.
Fifty, sixty thousand, seventy thousand dollars.
Page forty-three, just for clarification. Uh, line item number forty-one, is that still the only acceptable padlock?
Nope.
Should I verify that?
I have no idea.
The town only has, they have one padlock, cuz the fire trucks have one key.
Or should we just change that to lock specifications should be, should be provided by the fire department, in case they change their mind?
No, the fire department actually provides the lock.
Do they?
Yeah, the, the.
Why have forty-one in there?
Yeah, has to buy it from, but. Cuz they don't want anybody to have a key other than themselves. You, you, but when you build a sister and you put a lock on it. Then, when the, the fire department comes around and takes it off and puts theirs on. Because they don't want anybody to have a key to their lock other than them.
Makes sense.
So I'll just leave it like it is.
Some of these appendices and so forth are.
Well, the pages, pages are all screwed up, I guess.
Construction inspection sheet, does that really belong in subdivision regulation?
Yep.
Yeah, come on, place the, put it.
Yep, sorry.
And are these fees in appendix five still? Current?
I know we changed your butter fee to ten bucks. I scribbled that on there.
I think fees shouldn't be in here. I think we should have a fee schedule that could be amended from time to time, that doesn't need to be in here.
Well, I think it should be.
You think it should be?
Yeah, gotta be somewhere. You go to the zoning.
Is it anywhere else?
If you go to the zoning board, you can't find the fees anywhere.
Oh.
You gotta call Chip and ask him. Or email, which I did.
And what about the, uh, the values on appendix nine?
Nope.
Are those still correct?
Nope.
So that needs to be modified then, or eliminated?
Values will be taken off and I'm gonna, gonna, gonna be a little blurb put in the end about, ton engineer comes up with that.
I think these values, something Jim Donis had come up with years ago.
Yeah, these were brought up before I was on the board. The other one was near current.
Fifteen dollars a foot for granite curving? That sounds really cheap. That's just my guess, though.
Yes, it is, the whole thing's very cheap.
Do we even have anywhere in town that has curving?
They won it someday.
Anyone who doesn't know that curving has it?
We get some arqueal or street, we might want carbon and drainage and all that kinda good stuff.
Mm-hmm.
So I've got some work to do again.
Okay.
With that, I will close the public hearing on subdivision regulations. Gonna continue until date certain, but I'll just close it.
You ready to adjourn?
Unless we wanna do minutes.
No.
FYI, FYI.
We don't do minutes today, boy. Those are complicated minutes, too.
Yes, they are. I'm going to be submitting an application to Gulf Town, which I am timing. That I'm going to be probably in Gulf Town for all the workshops. My client's, please let that be. Cuz Gulf Town be saying that we do.
They do?
Yes. So then rather than miss a. Regular meeting, I'll be missing the workshop more than likely.
Okay.
If I get the condo site plan drafted up next week, which would be pretty easy to do. Just to let you guys know. That's one reason I wanted to get as hard as it is tonight.
Most likely I will not be around right here.
On the twenty-sixth.
That's a prop? Are you gonna be here on the twenty-sixth?
Yes.
Are you? Okay, and I will. For.
Unfortunately, I'm getting Connecticut.
Nothing wrong with Connecticut to apologize.
Yes, there is. I lived here for nine months.
Nine months too long?
Six.
Oh, okay. Are we gonna do minutes?
Do we wanna do minutes or what?
If we do, we can't do them in, if, we should do them at the next meeting, cuz the right people will be here. But if we do them at the next meeting, it could take half an hour, easily. Got two sets of minutes on a very contentious issue.
Then we got another set of minutes that aren't on a contentious issue.
Before we discuss minutes, where are we at with a? Minutetaker?
We will have one next meeting for Chip, they're going to hire him or her this Monday.
So we should really give them a fresh set of minutes to start and get these out of the way.
Not necessarily. They might, he or she might appreciate it, or is it, or is it it's?
I think it's a he or a she.
Okay, just making sure.
They, be safe.
They, we could have more than one? Being it's nine thirty, I don't have a problem doing either way. I've looked at them.
Well, the question is, are they accurate? Remember, this is one guy with a lot of stuff going on hearing things. And I'm being selective in what I put down, I'm not like our minutetaker who takes down every word that everybody says.
I've, I've said many times, it's very, oh, I did it once, tried to take minutes while participating, it is next to impossible.
Well, the last set of me, last set of minutes, the three people were here already.
The three of us?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I can go through it from a. Period and comma standpoint, as for the, as for the accuracy of it.
I got about three things that I. Kind of big changes, eh? Changed word environmental to hydrologic. Mister Fillmore made, made a motion that the application dated would be accepted, or a conditional use application, probably gotta say that. I've got a spelling one for you. She does not have a J in it. She does not have a J in it.
I'll be damned.
I don't know what to add in here, but something that's, this is, needs to be chased around. The chairman pointed out that karma could be waived isn't the right word. That's, you know, with conditional use. Wait, might be the right word, wait.
Well, let's, why don't we do this set of minutes and just drop them here?
Doing the, uh, the last meeting?
Yeah, June twenty-eighth.
Yeah, that's what we're looking at.
Um, you're gonna give me this to take back with me?
Sure.
So that I can make the changes and send them on to Chip.
I'll read them again, though. I was reading these, that's why I was late. And that's the truth, I didn't know I was late.
I don't know if it's a version I have, but. I believe it's the third page. It's the same, uh, page that has it's she with a J in it.
Yes.
Uh, couple lines down, Emily Boynton of eleven Riggadell Road, last word, version I have has a Q in, in, in the word boards. But it could be just the online version I have. B O A R D Q S. It could be just a. Issue when it got converted to a PDF.
Under Emily Boynton, I don't see that word.
Said she was disheartened, disheartened by the.
Boards, and then that word boards in the online version.
Oh.
Has a Q between the D and the S.
No.
Okay, then ignore this. The same thing happened, uh, a couple of words later, landowners, so must be that apostrophe is coming up, there's a Q on my version.
Something like that is what I said.
Got it. I thought I did it pretty niftily, but otherwise be accommodated on the site, but okay.
I wanted to get the conditional use permitting out. So we got the she with a J. That same page, three fourths of the way down, starts out Michael Dahlberg. It says.
This, so your, your change, where, where did that big change go?
Second page. Mid, under Kevin LeFavor, yeah.
Okay.
About two thirds of the way down.
Under.
Mike Dahlberg, for the applicant stated, there was no hydrologic study done, just consulted, consultation with a geologist. It was pointed out, a motion was adopted in May twenty-fourth, meeting required, and. I thought it was hydrologic, have one double check that. Africa study.
Did we approve those minutes? Because I may have gotten it wrong there, too.
No, we did not. Environmental.
Mm-hmm. But if this is wrong.
I think the environmental study you're asking for is strictly hydrological.
Yes, that's correct.
I think you're probably right, but I don't think I would have put down environmental if the motion were hydrological.
Understand. Let's leave it, okay, let's leave it the way it is. Same page, third line up, starts seconded by Mister Fillmore, comma. That the, can we insert conditional use application? Dated May six, May sixteen, the acceptance is complete. That was all I had.
Okay. Bruce, you got anything?
No.
Okay, I'll make those changes.
Make a motion, we accept the minutes on June twenty eighth, twenty eighteen, I remember.
I'll second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm making a motion, we approve from June fourteenth, two thousand eighteen minutes as written. It's short.
Uh, what was the date, six fourteen? Yeah. I'll second that.
Discussion?
Next hit.
Oh, Sean's gonna find a grammatical thing. Oh, Sean's gonna find a grammatical thing.
I'll leave more money.
Discussion again, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained?
Is Thomas Nichols, his last name actually spelled correctly, cuz I don't see him up at present.
Yes, it is.
Just checking. Aye.
Four nothing. So that's gonna lead for the new.
So there's one set of minutes that we haven't approved.
Is her, it's, yes, May twenty-fourth is the only one left.
Okay.
Can you put that in the minutes, this is the only one left, so, cuz that's a hard thing for me to remember. I kinda want Sheila and everybody else to always keep track of that. It's bad enough to go to all the others.
Okay, it's um nine forty.
I make a motion, adjourn?
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained?